Okay, we're gonna call the North Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, June 2nd, 2015 on order. Let's rise from the national level. Would you please just give it up? My pleasure ladies and gentlemen. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. It's, uh, we're excited to be here tonight. We, uh, had a very nice dinner. Here at the evening, we expanded a little bit on dinner, so we're kind of suited. But, uh, anyway, uh, Mr. Lyons is out, he's on vacation. So we're gonna go ahead and start with public comments, Ms. Keys.
Can everybody hear?
No.
Can everybody hear me? A little better? Okay. I'll try to speak loudly. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our public comment section of our agenda this evening. I think there might have been some confusion. I think some people thought it was more of a sign-in sheet, but it's really just for public comments. So if I call your name and you don't wanna speak, just let me know. First person up is John Motesbee. If you could please state your full name for the record and your address. You have approximately three minutes. Um, and please stay exactly for the three minutes. If you go over the three minutes, I will wave my hand.
Good evening, tonight, board. My name is John Motesbee. 15 Addison Avenue, Southern North Connecticut. I was at the last Board of Education meeting and I give each one of you, board, a complaint and a letter to your address. And what happened, I did not get no Ms. Barnes back from the boards. What I did, did, I got the letter back from Mr. Lyle, and he sent me back a letter. And this letter, he said me looked like he was threatening me. Uh, I asked him just to correct some minutes, and what he said, that his letter said the minutes was corrected. Also, he told me that I followed a human rights commissioner, and they have missed the complaint. He wasn't attacking me. And what I want to do to vote, that I give you a letter again tonight. Now, I know the board policy, and I worked in these schools for about thirty years, I know them policies like a book. Board of Education, always in my thirty years, always heard our complaint from everybody, even before the executive session. You all, Board of Education, right here tonight, allow Mr. Lyle to violate your own policy. What I did tonight, when you all read my complaint, I'm asking you all to correct these things, saying what Mr. Lyle do, 'cause he got a vendetta against me. And I don't believe that anyone who speak up in this town, it seems like they got a vendetta against us. And then, for the public in all, we have a right, the boards have a concern. I'm a stander at what I say before, that we'll never the process. And we have a right to come to you all and ask you all to correct what we want. So I'm asking you tonight, this nine little board, to correct and address my complaints, because I'm not playing. I'm ready to go to court. There must times, it gonna be something, and I don't have a fight. They gonna be, it gonna be something done about it, because it's unfortunate to beat up on the public, if they speak out what they want. Not only to beat me down, to beat at anybody. I don't care who they are, you speak about high tracks or anything, you get beat up. You get beat up by the public sometime at the bar, and what you call that bar battle? Okay, that don't bother me. But I want you all to do something tonight, and address my complaint. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next person we have up is Stanley Shure. Say your full name and address for the record, please.
Stanley Shure, Stafford, Connecticut. I'm the president of Local 1042, custodian, security leaders. Um, I sent two, I gave you guys a letter from one of the teachers at my school, who's a band director, and one of my complaints is overtime, Memorial Day coverage. Uh, we've been going back and forth for years over this. It's self-explanatory, you can read the letter, but to make the long story short, that's a part of custodians' overtime, and we're getting kinda like tired of our overtime issue now, due to Memorial Day. We should have a coverage for custodian. Uh, lately, they've been giving teachers keys, administrators keys. We had head custodian meeting, head custodians giving his own personal keys, his own personal code, uh, to the building, which is all professional. Uh, back in 2012, it was, uh, I guess it was financial issues that we had. Uh, Mr. Boyd tried to stop that, but in my school, we kept it going, and opponents did it, we did it as well. I come to find out, other schools, uh, head custodians giving his own personal keys and codes, this is a violation that he shouldn't do. And then, I met with, uh, Dr. Deluski, and I said, "I have a, I have a problem, because every time coming up, custodians overtime, uh, it seems administrators, uh, different people making excuses about, uh, we can't get paid overtime." They made excuses that it's too much on the taxpayers, and too much on this, but it's well worth it. Uh, we do our job. Uh, they don't worry about the overtime, and when they call me twelve o'clock in the morning to go security the school, 'cause it's a break in or something, nobody worries about that. Uh, we're just kinda tired of, uh, we getting shortchanged on our overtime. Everybody looking at our contract and, uh, and, uh, and it's trying to pick, uh, not pay us, and it's, it's just crazy. We're just, you know, we're just sick and tired of that. Um, the other issue that we have also, um, with overtime is with, uh, with the outsourcing. Uh, we explained to the guys before, when we met the board's lawyer back in May, uh, 2014, when they had, when they do the outsourcing, that it's gonna be a problem, people sick, uh, work may come, you cutting the workforce. That's why we have folks in the part-time people, the lawyers told us, they didn't care about floating, they didn't care about the part-time people, they was gonna hire, um, and they didn't have problem paying overtime. Now, we have issues, we had to file briefs, 'cause management is, uh, changing people's hours, just to try to accommodate, so they won't pay overtime, which is a violation. It is, you know, it is not respecting us. We asked to meet with them, to talk to them about certain issues, and it does not come to pass. Uh, the other issues, that we don't have to follow doing work, I guess, uh, come to find out, I think Jefferson School is having, um, they have a camp at another school, um, and it's giving us the more work at the school, they outsource it, they not have a camp, so you giving us more work. We not complaining about that, but on the same token, in our head custodian meeting, it was said at the, at the end of our meeting, that they didn't want custodians to take their vacation last three weeks of, of August, which is a violation. We, we, as a unit, came and we talked to management and said, "Hey, we have security guards, we have, uh, floaters, we have these people to, to help out the overtime issues." They refused to meet with us, but I just wanna bring my complaint to you guys and let you know what's going on.
Lori Hall, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Lori Hall, I'm a two eyes employee at Norwalk. I'm the thirty-two year Norwalk resident taxpayer. I came before you with the May nineteenth meeting to discuss the concern I have with Bruce Morris, Director of Human Relations for the Norwalk School System. To review, October twenty-first, two thousand fourteen, Bruce Morris issued an email stating, and I quote, "Lori Hall is not to be assigned to a program on Norwalk Public Schools Buildings or Programs," end quote. He wants to conduct an investigation and issue a report explaining the ban. I was to receive a copy of the report, though he gave me several different dates by which time the report been completed, he has yet to comply. In addition, on December first, two thousand fourteen, W. Lee Palmer Jr., Head of Human Resources for the Norwalk School System, stated in an email to me, I quote, "You are not permitted access to the schools in any capacity," end quote. Quote, "I will defer Bruce relative to explain the basis for this as determined through the investigation," end quote. I want to stress that when Bruce Morris instituted this ban, the Norwalk School System did not employ me, I was a private citizen. Bruce Morris's ban caused me to be terminated from my position at the Norwalk YMCA, where I worked in an after-school program. Um, I was told by W. Lee Palmer Jr. to cancel an upcoming job interview at a Norwalk Elementary School, and if I showed up, I would be escorted from the building. I had to turn down a position doing literacy evaluations in Norwalk schools, even though it was through a third party. As I stated in the last Board of Education meeting, I believe Bruce Morris is the prime of my rights, has and is continuing to bully me, is not doing his job, and is abusing his power. This ban is absurd, unsubstantiated, and arbitrary. So here's my update. It has been seven months since Bruce Morris first had any ban. I came before you, May nineteenth. In the ensuing two weeks, I have not heard from anyone from the Norwalk School System. If I do not hear from someone by the next meeting, you will see me again.
Subini, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening, Subini. Seven Christopher Lane, Norwalk, Connecticut. Uh, literacy for parents for their children, FERPA violations, Title I questions, no collaboration. Uh, two letters were sent to the NFT staff by Central Office, May eleventh and May twenty-sixth, requesting a copy of the curriculum for literacy for parents for their children. There's been no response. My concerns for the record. The next literacy for parents for their children event is this Thursday, June fourth. The presentation is slightly invite-only. An invite to this appears to be as difficult to get as something to the Kardashian wedding. On June fourth, literacy for parents is being presented to parents at five new Title I schools, Marvin, Silverline, Jefferson, Tracy, and Kettle. Parents and the public are under the impression that the program is collaboration between Norwalk Public Schools and the NFT. Central Office has acknowledged that there was no collaboration, and they are sending a Norwalk Public School representative to observe the June fourth event. No one in Norwalk Central Office had input for access to the curriculum or design. There was no whole school connections. The curriculum was not vetted by Norwalk Public Schools before they presented to parents. And although he made for taxpayer funding, the Norwalk Federal, uh, Nor, NFT told Central Office that the curriculum was provided for. Title I parents were invited to the June fourth event, not by Norwalk Public Schools, but via a commercial e-mail program from a private Gmail account. For all intents and purposes, literacy for parents for their children appears to be a private program, albeit paid for by taxpayer dollars. Under what authority or agreement, the NFT and its reps on April second were given access to parent and student contact information, emails, and phone numbers at five new schools and still being compliant with FERPA is a question that remains to be answered. Parent engagement is a very good thing. Let's make sure anything Norwalk Public School does in regard to parent engagement is done very well. Thank you.
Charlie Williams, our next speaker. Please state your full name and address, please.
Good evening, everyone. Charlie White, two thirty one Lincoln Avenue, Bridgeport, Vice President of Local ten forty-two and custodian at Cranberry Elementary School. Came here just briefly to bring to the board's attention, there was a head custodians meeting last week between Mr. Hodel and our head custodians, and he changed what isn't really a policy. He informed us that we have braided uniforms throughout the summer. As you know, this is a sixty-five percent polyester-to-cotton blend, non-braided material, and it is much too hot now to be wearing it. However, in July and August, it would become dangerous to wear it. Also to bring to your attention that there is no agreement in our contract pertaining to uniforms, so even wearing the uniform is not part of our agreement. But to wear it over the summer certainly shouldn't be allowed by anyone. We were told that we would have to give back five uniforms. Presently, all custodians have eleven uniforms, they're washed once per week, so basically you can wear your uniforms, a different uniform, fresh uniform every day, and then it would be collected, and it would be a week before you got them back, so you'd have your upper spare uniforms to wear during that week. If we get back five every other week, we would effectively be out of uniform, which isn't beneficial for students or anyone else identifying the custodians, especially visitors to the building. Um, secondly, I was informed by my members that the privatized schools are wearing the same uniforms. They are not part of our union. What makes this dangerous is anything that they do outside of work while wearing this uniform that might be deemed criminal, we can get blamed for, 'cause everyone recognizes this as our uniform. Just something for the board to consider going forward. Thank you.
Colleen O'Shawson?
I'm Colleen O'Shawson, College candidate at St. Edward's Church, and good evening. I'm here this evening, uh, because the updated recess physical activity policy is on the agenda, and I'm also here at the suggestion of Heidi Pies, Head of the Policy Committee. Uh, I'm a parent of a student at Rowayton Elementary School who receives special education services through his IBP plan. I am also a music teacher, and I am a certified teacher in vocal music, K through twelve. I served this spring as a parent member on the recess committee that helped to make some of the revised recommendations about recess that were submitted for a vote to the policy committee. From a parent's perspective, I would like to say that the revised parts to the policy that pertain to the outdoor recess weather guidelines are a good improvement. They are a good improvement from the weather guidelines that pre, that previously existed, uh, because those kept my son inside during recess for much of this winter. I like that these new weather guidelines are going to give our children more adequate outdoor physical playtime, and in turn, help them, help them to learn better when they need to be inside focused and structured. One question that I would like to ask the board is how will this updated policy be communicated with parents? I believe that parents will be interested to see the updated weather guidelines, as well as the other bullet points, which are listed on here. Um, for example, the bullet point, uh, that states that staff shall not deny participation in recess or other physical activity as a form of discipline or punishment, nor should they cancel the core instructional time. Would it be possible for an email to go out, just as my principal at Rowayton emailed out the previous recess weather guidelines back in January? I think this will be most appreciated by parents. Also, I would like to ask that this updated recess physical education policy should be improved, be posted somewhere at each school, so that it's easily viewable by parents and staff, in case the electronic form is not received. Thank you for your time.
If I have any questions, or can you answer, or at least all of your questions?
I said yeah.
You can stand there, you can sit, if it'll be friendly. Keep on to my line, I'm sorry. Um, as far as the policy going out, once it's approved this evening, um, it will be coming from the superintendent's office, it will be submitted to the Righteous Educations Board at all of our schools. I think it's a great idea to have it posted, so you can certainly suggest to each principal to have it posted, so every employee can see it, as well as every parent coming into the school can see it as well. Um, and you also have another question or concern that you had?
No, I just wanted to ask about whether, how it's gonna be disseminated among parents, 'cause I think many parents would be very interested in knowing the changes, 'cause it affects all of us.
Absolutely. Thank you, and thank you for serving on the committee. Our next speaker is Bruce Millian. Address for the record.
Bruce Millian, North Federation Teachers, Nine Mod Avenue, today evening. I left, um, a handout at each one of your places, and the reason I did it is because there is an outstanding event that is happening tomorrow evening, and the two lead teachers who have been involved in the project we're working on, who also are working for the State of Connecticut under the Commissioner, are gonna be honored tomorrow. And I gave you a copy of the invite from the State Board of Education of Connecticut. The State Board of Education, State Board of Education Chairman Alan Taylor, and Commissioner of Education Donna Winsel, courtsly invited to reception honoring exemplary individual who advanced public education in our state. This is a celebration of excellence in education for Connecticut's 2015 honor reaps tomorrow evening in Hartford. We are very proud, and we should all be proud, that two Norwalk teachers have risen to this level, and they're being recognized tomorrow evening by the Commissioner and by the head of the State Board of Education. And while there's many, many teachers in Norwalk and across the state who certainly are at that same level, two Norwalk teachers are being honored tomorrow night, I think it's something to be proud of, and hopefully the meeting will let everyone aware of. Also, there's an attachment, uh, which is something you've received before, and we will continue forward with the excellent set this program has, and the excellence, uh, that the two teachers do, uh, working particularly on common work with the State of Connecticut. Thank you.
Excellent question. Bruce, who, we know that two Norwalk teachers--
You do, Mike, you do.
For the record.
For the record, go ahead, Mike.
I don't know.
Did you do your song, "You Were There"? Is that a?
Okay, that's, okay, I wasn't sure. I have something to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That ends our public comment section of our agenda this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Keys. Okay, we're on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening. Yeah, Dave. I can't sound like voice is loud, anyway. Um, I just wanted to report to the board on several things, most of them are positive, and one is a, I wouldn't call it a cautionary tale, but, uh, first thing, just as a suggestion, I know that Brandon Williams is here. Besides hosting, the, uh, policy's gonna be adopted, I think it would also put on all of our websites, both the district website and all the school websites, too. Um, the, uh, three other things I wanted to bring to the board's attention, besides our two teachers being honored, uh, tomorrow at Flat, uh, Technical High School in Hartford. Um, last year, I thought the honor reaps were the governor's mansion, but I don't know where, where we stand this today with the governor, but I remember going to an event like this last year, and it was at the governor's residence. But I just wanted to alert the board on, on Friday, uh, the, uh, the State Department of the Commissioner of Education, the Commissioner of Economic Development, and the Provost for the Board of Regents of Higher Education are hosting an event in New Haven at Gateway Community College. It's really to showcase the, uh, the programs between the high school and the community college system. Specifically, we're the only one in Connecticut right now, we're the prototype, is the Norwalk Earlton College, uh, Academy. Uh, we're the only one in Connecticut right now, and, uh, what the, what the Department of Higher Education is trying to do is replicate these models in several other parts of the state. I know they're working with Gateway, uh, Community College, working with, uh, North Valley Community College, I believe they're working with Winnebago Community College up in the northeastern part of the state. And I mention this because, again, uh, we're the prototype, and one of the people that are probably speaking of that is, um, is our own Karen Emmeter, who is the, uh, the director and founding director of the, uh, program here in Norwalk. So I think it's quite an honor for the district and for the state that we're the prototype, and all of the other communities that are attending this are really looking at our model. And then, this comes, this is a cautionary tale. Uh, we were delighted to have, uh, several, uh, soon to be graduates of the PTech program in Brooklyn, New York come and speak for our children last Friday. About, uh, PTech was the original model, it was developed by IBM, it's had a lot of, uh, support right up to the President of the United States. Uh, our, our Norwalk model is somewhat like the PTech model. Uh, however, as we envision it here, and as we continue to envision it here, uh, it's very important that this program be part of our comprehensive high school, and not be an isolated program. And one of the young people who spoke from Brooklyn at the, uh, at the program last Friday indicated that the, as he advanced up in grades, the program got more difficult. It's a very, very academically rigorous program, uh, chilled, some of the students are getting both a high school diploma and an associate's degree in four years. And the young man mentioned this, he went up in years, and the program became more rigorous, he, uh, he had to make a choice between focusing on the academic program and dropping extracurricular activities, and drop, and, uh, and this is a cautionary tale, I've already talked to, uh, Karen Emmeter. We wanna make sure that this program does the two things. It rules these kids in a rigorous, rigorous academic direction. However, they're part of comprehensive high school, and we all feel that they're just not the academics. When you're part of high school, particularly Norwalk High School, has probably one of the most comprehensive and best extracurricular programs in the state, that these students will also be able to participate in that. So the challenge to our staff, to our administrative staff, our teaching staff, and our council staff in this program, is to help students balance, balance the academic standards, would still, would still have the opportunity to participate in a very, very rich, um, extracurricular and comprehensive high school program here in Norwalk High School. But from my own experience, I find where you add schools into the school, it's very, very important that those students also participate in broader school culture. And a lot of that, as the program's focus, a lot of that is your extracurricular. So, uh, I've spoken to this Emmeter, and I just wanna make sure that we understand that you're in Norwalk, that it's in our high school, it's a school within the school, but we really, the expectation is all those students, every time here, will also originally participate in the extracurricular activities and the other things that make Norwalk High School a very special place. And we'll be emphasizing that when we, uh, when, uh, Ms. Emmeter, uh, presents at the statewide conference. The second thing, which is, I think, very, very positive, and if things don't change between now and tomorrow night, and the state legislature does pass a budget, uh, preliminarily, we're looking at some good news for Norwalk. Uh, right now, it looks like they've added a couple hundred thousand dollars to the priority school district grant, and we're hopeful that that will help us in assuring that we have a pretty comprehensive, adequate funding for the after the bell program and the South Valley Community, Community Center. I mentioned last month that, uh, as we design the program now, we feel we can access Title I funds, and I was unsure what would be available from, uh, from the governor's budget, because he initially had cut out after-school programs. But I'm told, I don't know what form it's coming in, but I'm told we're gonna get at least a couple hundred thousand dollars for the partner's school disrepair. The second one, which is even better news, is the Baptist schools have been funded flat funding for at least a half a dozen years, and that includes the Global Studies Program in Ryan McMahon, which is becoming difficult for us, because our costs go up, but the, uh, our state funding is stayed flat. My understanding is that the governor's budget, or the budget that I hope the legislature passes, has at least two hundred thousand dollars, uh, for, for the Global Studies Program and other Baptist schools. This is not earmarked for, uh, for Norwalk. All of the Baptist schools across the state, uh, will be getting, will be getting some increase, but they all been flat funded, as you know, for at least five years. So if everything holds true, and it doesn't blow up between now and tomorrow night, I think that really is good news for Norwalk, and really takes a burden off of us trying to reconcile our, our budget for next year with the assurance that we'll be funding, additional funding for the Global Studies Program and for the after the bell program and several community centers. And lastly, when things are good, I also like to point out, and one of the things that, uh, I really was proud of, and the mayor was with me, is to participate in the deer graduation, uh, last Thursday at the Concert Ball, the City Ball. And I've been in many districts throughout the state, and I just have to compliment Norwalk, the police department, and the school system for the deer program here. It's probably one of the most comprehensive deer programs I'm aware of in any part of the state, and it shows a real, real commitment at, at all times to the Norwalk Police Department, with, uh, the chief, all the way down to Officer Holmes, who, uh, kind of coordinates it, as well as all of the other deer officers in the, uh, in the department that volunteer for this program. We have a real, we have a real gem of a deer program here. I just want the board to know, and the community to know, it's something that the city of Norwalk and schools should be very, very proud of. Thank you. Yeah, it was, uh, one of the, um, speakers tonight indicated that she had come last, uh, meeting, and I just wanted, uh, her to know that both Dr. Deluski and I are investigating, um, your, your situation, and hopefully I'll have, I'll have actually done before the next board meeting. Uh, we're reaching out to people who don't exist here anymore, and so that's part of our problem. And, uh, I have Dr. Deluski trying to reach back and find out what was owed here, what we told him, and everything else, but, uh, hopefully I'll have some answers by the next board meeting.
I also do have to take the word from Stephen, what's--
Well, I'll let Dr. Deluski get the question, too. Well, Dr. Deluski getting questions too.
Thank you. People are discussing the DARE program. I had a parent ask me about the expansion of that program.
What is it?
The DARE program. The expansion of it. Because right now it targets just kids in elementary school.
Yeah, grade, right.
And they were, they're asking me what are, will we, either the city or the board or whoever, are going, what we're going to do to try to expand this program, to reach out and touch middle school kids and high school kids because they are the ones that are most in need at this point. Because in middle school and high school is where they're targeted by gangs and into all these things. So is there some way, some way we can try to figure out a way of trying to maybe expand this program, to touch and reach out to middle school and high school kids so we don't lose any of those processes after they finish the DARE and then the elementary?
The mayor has more experience than me from his former job.
Yeah, and your question is a good question because we explored that possibility in the past. There are DARE programs for first grade, third grade, fifth grade, seventh grade, eleventh grade. The problem is fitting it into the curriculum and finding new people to teach it. In Norwalk, we have eleven thousand students that would eventually have to go through it. Not each year, but I know in the middle schools now, they're presenting the Encourage to Speak program, which is kind of an addendum to that. One of the things we've recognized for a long time is that when you have a fifth grade program that teaches children for ten weeks, a couple hours a week, there's not a blown-by-stick effect. And you have to try to keep them engaged over the years. So it's always something regular that we want to do. And hopefully we can get it into the curriculum in the middle schools and high schools. Now that we have school resource officers in the high schools and the middle schools, we have them in the three high schools, we have them in the four middle schools. They can take up some of that responsibility. And in the elementary school, the DARE officers that are there now can continue. So it's something that we really want to explore, so we'll make sure we do that.
I think one of the DARE, for the most part, around the country, started as a fifth grade program because you wanted to get kids before they, where you can still have a lot of influence on them. And if you, if you looked at a graduation on Thursday, those kids were engaged. They really, they admired their DARE officers, they were listening. It's an important age because once they leave fifth grade, they're into junior high. Peer pressure obviously becomes greater. But the mayor is absolutely right. They need, they continually need some kind of support to back up the decision-making process that they learned in DARE. Many districts years ago brought DARE into the night. I personally feel we need to do something, maybe we don't call it DARE, through the middle grades too. And the other thing is if you are a DARE officer, it does take special training. Just came to size, someone said you're a DARE officer, they have to go through special training. But I think, as the mayor said, with the fact that we have SROs in all three high schools and four middle schools, I think we have a possibility to do something.
Okay, we're on to the action portion of our meeting.
Oh, can I just mention one more thing? She, she's on the action portion of the meeting. And I just wanted to note to the board that Grace Better, our health services director, is retiring in August. And in my opinion, this is as big a loss to the school system as some of the other people that we've talked about before. Grace is not going out for another job. She's going into having to retire. But she has been with us for twenty-one years. She started as a substitute nurse at All Saints School. She was a road school. She was ten years her in the high school and five years now in Central Law Center, Health Center, Health Services Director. And she is going to be a big loss. She really is. She's on top of things. She's professionalized in the nursing services. She has an excellent working relationship, not only within the school system, but with Tim Callahan and our health department and Dr. Weinberger, the school department's medical officer. I just wanted to note to the board, I certainly am sure of that. I work in here, so I'm a real great professional. And is dedicated, is will be dedicated through the dedication please here in August to the children and the students of Norwalk.
Okay, can I have a motion so we can continue the discussion? I have a motion. Second, anyone? Please. Okay, any comments? Ms. Keys?
Yes. And I have a question. We have children that are making time. Um, the children are going to tell me, actually, a few years past, we had retirement parties, not parties, kind of get-togethers for some of our staff that are not working. Some of our staff that have retired over the years, we had kind of get-togethers. Usually I believe it's sitting long.
We're going to try to get, we're going to talk.
I think that's important to you, but I don't know if we had, we had this year. I don't believe, we had last year, we both.
Yeah, we'll, sure.
Usually we have it, so it would be great if we could continue that, especially many of our employees that are moving on and then are retiring. Okay. I also wanted to come to, I recognize, um, Grace, I've been with Grace for years and she's been self-instrumental in our public schools, ten years, or maybe twenty-one years. Long, long time in our public schools. And she has been absolutely amazing and certainly will be a loss for Norwalk. But we're happy for her that she's moving on.
Anybody else have comments? No? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Next approval policy, six one four two, dot sixty-one. Physical activity may have motion, Ms. Regis. Thank you. Second, anyone? Ms. Keys? If I can. Any comments? Ms. Keys, can you?
Yes. My wonderful mother. This has been long in coming. And again, I want to thank Ms. Williams, as well as Mr. Dona, and many of the parents, staff members, the administrators, parents. Be part of the committee, the committee met several times, came together with their decision and really their opinion on what we should do as far as outdoor recess. Again, long in coming, I know it's been a hot topic for many parents. And I'm actually thrilled that it actually came to fruition tonight. Kind of back and forth with policy and the committee that was formed. But I think it really will make an impact for our students. They really should be able to get out. And they should always be able to get out for outdoor recess. Unless it's related to whether we actually stated that in the policy. So as soon as we hopefully approve that this evening, we can make a policy. We can make sure that it's posted on our website. The policy is sent to all of our principals. I think it would be a great suggestion to also post it in each school. So any staff member or parent can see that. That's it.
Any comments?
Yes, from my understanding, does this mean that what it says on outdoor recess, temperatures below freezing, does this mean that they can, you know, the more staff is working?
If it's twenty-six, twenty-three or higher, they can get out. It's twenty or above.
Twenty or above, thirty degrees or so. Anything more?
Make it up to them.
We discussed it as a policy committee, also discussed it with the policy committee that goes along with the administration of the district directors' principals. We felt, they felt that, that we should have some kind of guideline. It should be twenty degrees or above to let children out. It was discussed as far as clothes, what they should be bringing. But the committee felt it's important for these children to be able to be outside. We didn't know that. Correct.
Mr. Don, you're on the committee, right? You're in the committee, you have any comments? I'd just like to add to it.
No, it was a, a consensus. There are no state guidelines as far as letting kids go outside and letting them stay in. There are webpages that we researched. And there was a clause there, again, you know, weather conditions are not the only conditions that sometimes kids go outside. You know, one time we had a coyote in the Polish Ridge area. So we didn't let the kids go outside for reasons. One issue that did come up that, you know, I'm going to put it into, is that sometimes when it snows, we have to decide how to clear the area for students to go. And that's an issue that needs to be discussed. However, if the weather conditions, and the conditions for outside were, you know, it was consensus of the committee and by the majority, we had.
Also, as a policy committee, we didn't want to just say, okay, this is what we decided, we're going to put it through. We wanted a makeup of school staff to really decide what they wanted. So it was a law of recognition of all of our schools to come to this decision.
Anyone else have comments? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Your next policy is approval of world languages and social studies textbooks. May I have a motion, Ms. Regis? Second, anyone? Ms. Keys? Mr. Barbas, can you give a session?
Yes. Okay, I hope everyone can hear me.
Uh, you can't hear me.
Okay, yeah? Yeah, great, okay. So we are here tonight to approve the purchase of new textbooks and world languages and social studies. The final steps of this involved process have been, you know, on April twenty-third, the Curriculum Instruction Committee, that to review this. It was considered a special meeting as we had to adjust the schedule due to our superintendent's interviews. Then at the May fifth board meeting, committee reports, Frigga, committee chair Mike Wise, had discussed, or he had discussed, he discussed the fourth of the curriculum meeting on April twenty-third. He noted that the next step is to fund both the professional development and the actual purchase of textbooks. On May nineteenth, this topic was placed in information reports on the agenda. Committee Chair Wise did provide notice of the intended change of world languages and social studies textbooks. And this intended change notice is the same mandate that requires the issuance of notice prior to the authorization of the purchase. Thus, it had to be on the agenda for the next meeting for approval. And that's where we are tonight. Our matter is on the agenda for approval, for vote. And these are the series of textbooks that I will go through for you. And world languages, for French, one, two, and honors two is a textbook series called Deco. In Italian, one, two, and honors, it's ciao. In Spanish, one, two, and honors two is discúpula. And then in the social studies, more curriculum materials. In civics, it's the rulers, American government, US history, Prentice Hall, Reconstruction to the present. AP US history, American pageant, and world history by Pearson, the modern era. Committees were formed for both the series of textbooks. For world languages, there were thirteen high school teachers and twelve middle school teachers, as well as a consultant from CBS. This process actually started in two thousand thirteen. And the total cost for the world languages curriculum would be a hundred and seventy-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars. This is expected to cover eighteen-hundred-and-nine students, so the cost would be ninety-nine dollars per student. In social studies, there were nine members of the committee, teachers and administrators, plus a consultant from Crank. And I have to also tally, girlie ran the whole show, for both of these projects. The total cost for the social studies curriculum would be a hundred and sixty-four thousand seven dollars. Two thousand eighty-two students, that's seventy-eight dollars a student. So that's the materials. I'm happy to discuss the process if anyone wants to hear those details, but we have been through the mail several rounds. And really, the next step would be to approve these purchases tonight.
Any comments? Anyone? No? Okay. All in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you.
All right, next we have committee representative reports. Let's start with Ms. Murray.
I have a coming committee meeting. I'm hoping the staff say exactly how we're going to conduct that. How is budget allocation? So we might need to set up a video recording. Hopefully, we'll be able to, thanks to the four partners.
Next board meeting. Did you decide in the next board meeting?
I think we discussed, you know, with the time.
We have to change the time. Next board meeting. Because of the middle school graduates. Uh, next, Ms. Keys.
What we discussed tonight, that was huge as far as our outdoor recess. We have our next meeting, policy meeting, which is scheduled for June, February sixteen, for that's our middle school graduation. So we're going to need to cancel our policy meeting and then have it back up again for our July meeting, which I believe is the twenty-first of July.
I'd like to address the policy chair on the screen.
Sure.
And I would like to see if perhaps policy ninety-three twenty-six can be reviewed by the policy committee?
We can answer.
Policy ninety-three twenty-six. That's set up minutes, the minutes of regulation for what needs?
Policy ninety-three twenty-six.
Ninety-two twenty-six. Ninety-two twenty-six. Smooth.
Yes, um, in regards to that policy, that's going to fall right into sort of a trickle-down into when it comes time for us to review the minutes. And the minutes at this point is not in concurrent events that we will be reviewing later today is not in compliance with that policy. On there, the policy was changed and it was changed without board members having a vote or a discussion on it. And I'm curious and I'd like to know why that policy was changed in the minutes when it did not come to the full board, or the special board, at least to the policy committee to review and see if it's something that we need to either look at or bridge the community. And it's in the minutes, and I'm glad it came up now because we bring it up at the minute of six, seven, six, seven, seven times ever. Because here, basically, it's, the minutes has just a person, if they speak, pump speakers, if they speak, they just put a name, topic. Our board policy says that, yes, it says that the minutes shall summarize points made by speakers. It does not say anything about putting just name and just a topic of their conversation. And that is here on the minutes. Now, my concern is that we did receive an email to the board telling us that this action was taken. But the board was not informed of meeting so that we could discuss this or that it's going to go. And I'm a little concerned that, basically, this can happen where the recording person just go, you know, go ahead and change our minutes format without having a discussion with the full board or coming from the house, you know, to the board. And that is something that I vote tonight when I vote on these minutes. I would not be voting on these minutes. It would be a no because it's not in compliance with the format that we, that we have as the board policy. And that does fall under policy number ninety-three two-six. And that policy states that minutes are, can summarize points. It is not stating, saying that just your name and topic. And I hope that in the future, when things come in, that the full board will have an opportunity to have a discussion on this before any action is taken. Because, as you know, the board consists of nine members and one person alone is not the board. And if we cannot come together as a group and sit down and discuss something, whatever action is taken, but taken by one individual, is an action that is not in compliance. So if we're going to sit there and do these things, we need to sit there and work together as a board and bring this up. And then, basically, at that point, have a discussion at least, at least of all nine of us in order for us to make a decision. Any kind of decisions has to come to the full board. And we have policies on that as well. And basically, as a full board, that's when we can sit and decide if we're going to make any changes.
Anyone else? Comments? Anybody else? No? Next, I think Mr. Barbas?
Um, in terms of negotiation, in terms of negotiations committee, I don't have any updates.
Mr. Meek, no? No, that's, all right. Board member announcements, we'll start with Mr. Meek. No announcements, thank you. Mr. Barbas?
No announcements, thank you.
Ms. Keys?
Yes, I have announcements. Just as a reminder, we have our graduations going on, we have our middle school graduation, December 16th, I know it's taken, 17, 18, Norwalk, and 19, man, right, and 20, and all the other, and all that as well.
All that, yes. Is this serious? That one, okay.
Yes, last Thursday, we all, we, Ricky had her retirement party, it was wonderful, it was great, and we attended, it was, I mean, myself, and I was, over 200 people, close to 200 people there, and very good to sit there and give that kind of honor to someone that's been in the system like 52 or 54 years. And now, Mrs. Sumter is coming up this week, and then we have Mr. Dona in another week or so, and then hopefully we'll have something for Grace Better, but it's just an honor to sit here and spend time with people that have all these years of experience that's been to the school system, and just at least, you know, to give them our support and let them know how much we really care about the industry system. And I enjoyed it, Meek was extremely happy, it was with people, we got to meet him, and I expect the same with Mrs. Sumter, when I heard her retirement party was coming up, and I expect the same with Mr. Dona, and hopefully we'll hear something about Mrs. Better, so we can sit there and attend something with her. But I just want to just, again, say that I personally appreciate all that they have done in this school system. They are, they are a big part of Norwalk Public Schools, and I just wanted to say thank you, thank you, thank you, and I, and I hope that they will continue to be a part of the school system, and, you know, embrace us and guide us, even though they're not with us in the future. Thank you.
Ms. Murray?
Yes, I did attend, I did attend, recruit that community's of retirement, and I was, I was very, I was amazed, because coming from New York, from New York City, that, to me, that was a sense of true community, because she's been working over 50, 51 years, over 51 years in, in, in Norwalk, in school district, and everyone was sharing how, to work, she was, there wasn't no place for her to sit, she was seated in a closet, she had to sit on a wastepaper basket, and how they had to, like, just for the sake of student achievement, and what they had to do, or what they went through, and then they had, like, there was a moment there where they said, everyone who's gone, who's gone there for 10 years, who was standing up 20 years or more, standing up 30 years or more, and more and more people, they were just standing, knowing of this, of this retirement, and with the other, our other staff that were retiring too, I mean, it's really something that we will need to look at, because a lot of times, people go unappreciated, people go unappreciated, they've worked all their life and then not feel that they've contributed to life, or have a purpose, so, you know, I really enjoyed myself, and I'm ashamed I forgot about it, it was, thank you, it was one of the fans, but, yeah, so, thank you also.
I have two announcements to make. First, I wanted to thank, I don't think Mr. Barbas is here, right? But I'd like to thank him for hosting the meeting tonight here on the boards, and as well as the people who are here, can't fail, the marvelous did it for us. Also, did everybody get Miss Dan Corvus's email, just looking for facilitators for programs to do next week?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
If you did, all right, so if you can respond, if you can be there next, next Friday morning, I think it is. Friday at 10:00. Friday at 8:00. 2 hours. 8:00 to 10:00, yeah. So we can do that for her. Okay, great, that's all I have. Derek, we gave, we gave out.
Yes, I have another comment. We also, Ms. Williams and I also tried to organize this, we're thankful, so, we're really happy that everybody was able to attend tonight, I know it's different, we normally have our meetings at City Ball for many years, first time we've had it at another location, which is tonight in our time, we're hoping our next meeting will be, we'll try to work tomorrow, if we can at least involve, you're right, this summer, Brian McMahon will be our next meeting spot.
Do I have food?
I have food.
Last, you better be a normal guy, or try to show the trim. Okay, good. Next, we have the approval of minutes for May 19th, may I have a motion, please? Mr. Barbas? Ms. Rivas, second. Any comments? I have agents.
I have two corrections.
Okay.
Uh, one, I'm sure this was just autocorrect, page, I guess it's page, it says page 2 of 2. At the top, under super intense report, he talks about, it says bachelorette, and actual bachelorette, that it's actually baccalaureate. And then the second one is, under committee reports, under negotiations, I really, I don't know, honestly, I went to, it wasn't right, but I made, it's written there, makes literally no sense, and so, I was just talking gibberish, but what I was saying is, you know, Mr. Barbas reported that the teacher's contract is driven by the timeline of the city's budget schedule per state statute, that's what I was trying to say, that those comments did not reference that at all. And that's it for me.
Again, I wanted to state that I am, I will be fully go, because it's not in my policy, 9326.
Okay, to your point, I passed on the policy from this, Ms. Rivas, this review assessed, uh, to be reviewed, so, I'd rather go with the policy than the chairman.
Oh, yeah, no, that's fine, because I'm in the policy committee as well, so, that's why, you know, in the comments, we will look at it and make sure that we review it, and then make sure that if we decide that we are going to make a change, we need to involve the community, the public, parents, you know, stakeholders, all stakeholders, because when you make changes in policies, you have to make sure, especially with this magnitude, at least to have everyone have to take it.
Ms. Rivas, motion to table minutes?
These minutes until the policy is reviewed, because, because, Ms. Rivas, the right motion. Okay, motion to table, because it's very important when the public does come to make their comments, like, what over here we have, assuming that we come to about literacy for parents, is very important, and then other parents that are reading with the minutes, they really don't know what we're saying, we spoke about, people don't know exactly what Ms. Corvus spoke about, and just to, just to, just to pack their name, the address of study, it's very not, so I'd say until, if we could table it, until the policy does review it, then we can bring back the minutes, and also to the chains on, Mr. Arnes, who is the president of the town, we can discuss it further, so, motion to table.
Okay, comments? Anybody else? It's not amazing. All right, so there is a motion on the floor to table minutes, and can I have, although it's a good, for in favor of tableing minutes, please grant. Three, Ms. Murray, this Mophie, Ms. Rivas, votes against tabling, raise your hand. So, it's, it's a four, four degree, motion is not carried. So, do you have a motion to, a motion to approve, we have written a motion to approve, okay. All of us in favor of approving the minutes, please raise your hand. So we have Mr. Meeks, Mr. Barbas, Ms. Keys, Ms. Rivas, votes against, Ms. Rivas, Ms. Mophie, session, Ms. Murray. Okay, so the minutes pass. Uh, let's see, I guess we're going to executive session next, can I get a mo, motion to go into executive session? Ms. Rivas, can I get a second? Ms. Keys, all in favor? Unanimous? Okay, we are in executive session. Thank you very much, Paul, for helping out, joining us here, appreciate it. If you can find your way out. Just flagging that. So, can you pause on that? Okay. Tab this off. Tab it there? Yes. Okay, we're on. Okay. Ms. Rivas?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Education finds that the failure of Jennifer Canada to appear for the hearing concerning the nonrule of a teaching contract scale for deceiving constitutes a waiver of a right to a hearing, and that the nonrule of a teaching contract with the law of public schools therefore stands. Notwithstanding the foregoing, the Board directs Mr. Conley to vote for Ms. Canada of this action by email and regular mail by June 5th, and the Board will convene a hearing promptly if Ms. Canada reviews her requests for a hearing within seven days of Mr. Conley's email notification to her.
Okay, can I get a second? Ms. Keys, all in favor? Unanimous? Great, okay. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Ms. Mophie, second, wait a second. Anybody second?
Me?
Okay, Ms. Rivas, all in favor? Unanimous? We are done, thank you. Good, well, next, third. 3, 3, 3, 3.
Make sure that everything is, is working, I'm ready to call the conference.
Here we go.